District's Board of Directors meeting. Today is Wednesday, November fifteenth, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. So first on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any?
This one more.
Oh, those are our student reps, right? Okay, so seeing no one here for public comments, we'll move on to finance. If the treasurer's report. Any discussion on the treasurer's report? And accept the motion to?
To some votes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and the next on the list is the Arbiter Pay Service Extension.
And this is, we are in year one right now as we kind of, we signed up as basically a trial run for this year.
What is it?
So it's the service that kind of links with the athletic scheduling that they can assign officials. And officials that actually sign up to receive their pay electronically. It's as easy as the athletic director after the game pushing a button on their phone and the money goes directly to them. So we, we've essentially sent money to this company. They have a trust account that they're holding our funds in. So when we approve official payments, money's coming out of our money. They will, they will handle all of the tax implications with this because we're transferring the money to them. So they issue all the 1099s at the end of the year. We do still have a few folks that didn't want to sign up for it. So they are getting paid through accounts payable or payroll. But it's just, it's a lot faster. And those of you who have been on the board for a long time know that it's been an issue of being able to pay officials more timely. So that's why we end up having an off-cycle warrant every month we're processing too now. And that was mainly because we were trying to pay officials more quickly. But the electric bills never fall in timeframe either, so. So what we wanted to do, I think Mike can attest to that it's going well. We would just like to lock in for years two through five, but we don't have authority to do that. Board can authorize us to commit to a longer than a one-year term. So essentially, the document that's included in, in the packet, it was the original proposal and it'll lock us in for those prices next four years. I think it's, it's worth it. Again, I guess, you know, officials are kind of like the bus driver. Or just they're like agreed that are.
Not only the official has his hands up already.
So, yeah, yeah, I think we'd like to continue with it, but I don't know if Mike can speak firsthand. All I know is I've set up the account and I funded it and that's all I do with it, so.
Was there any negative things sent by anyone about not getting the money and like, or it's not coming out right, anything like that?
No, because it's all preset, so.
Okay.
The complaints were before we had the system. But how long, especially you got caught in between warrants.
But nothing about using this system, right?
I think it's pretty seamless. And then, and the nice thing is because it's integrating with the schedule that the VPA, they use a similar platform, but it's integrated. So when the officials actually get assigned, they're showing up on the events. So then Mike would just go in and say, yes, they rest this game for me and the money automatically goes to them.
Yeah, it, it is pretty seamless. It like as a, as an administrator, like kind of the athletic director, just being able to say, yeah, they showed up. It's as easy as right after the game, sending the money to the account. They, the officials set up their own arbiter, you know, kind of profile and they set up their bank accounts. It's a direct deposit that goes, you know, right to them. So it just is handled that way.
Benmo horrifically.
Exactly, yeah.
Yes.
That's what it is, you know. And then we also are able to sometimes use, you know, there, there's other, it doesn't just have to be officials. It could be, you know, a site worker, the chain crew, like during a, during a football game or something that, that's set up. So there's other people that can, you know, go in and kind of put in the information. Like Leon, you were set up this year for arbiter pay, right? Did you get your money just sent?
Many years.
Yeah.
Leon had his hands up earlier, so.
Well, the, the, the main thing that we missed out of this is that Vermont Principals Association and so forth. Now requiring all the schools to use arbiter. That's the main thing that we got. Now you got arbiter in place. And I was a little bit confused when I saw all of these pages down here. I'm saying, wait a minute. They're, they're demanding that we all go on it now. Every school in the state hadn't signed up and applied to that.
So the, the school, the VPA is not saying they have to use arbiter pay. What, what they are saying is they have to use the arbiter platform for like scheduling and all of that. So like the pay, yeah, so that you have to do the, use that for the schedule making, yep.
So that's why I wanted to make sure you, that we distinguish the difference between the two. That everybody needed for scheduling purposes and assigning the officials to do that. This pay piece, I didn't realize that we had to, that each school had to buy it. Now I know why some of them are not doing it, you know, because it's like, it's four, five years, $8,000 to do that. And I know some of them hadn't bought in, they own there and you're getting your assignment. So that's, that's up to us. It, it does make it easy. I do gangs all over the state in college and other areas too. And all I do is just come home and before I even leave the parking lot, they push a button and the paycheck. You get an email says you've been paid or you got something on arbiter. And you go on the arbiter and you download the payment. If you want to, you can let it sit there for a while. And then decide you want to transfer the payment, but the money is there for you in your account.
We're.
Can make, can make it easy.
Do, do the officials have to use arbiter?
No.
So they don't, so they can get paid through a normal check if they want to?
Because of their, so we have a few around.
Really slow.
It's really slow and it's, it's more man hours for your, your staff to be doing that, so.
I'll move it. Is that only varsity or is that sub varsity all the way down?
So they do, so JV as well handles the arbiter pay and even up to like middle school, depending on the sport, you know. So I know wrestling, it's whether the assigner, like they go through arbiter and set it up that way. So yeah, it depends on what the sport is.
Well, we do have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I was gonna second. I just wanted, she's wanting to say it for a year is what you did. I don't even know it's got five-year contract on that paper. Is that correct?
So we would be authorizing us to commit to years two through five on the document that was in the packet.
That's right, and that totals up to $8,000 or something after that. That's why I wanted to make sure.
Okay, so I have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? Charlie, did you have something else to add? Okay, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So. Okay. Operations, seeing, we don't see anybody here for operations. We have nothing listed on the agenda. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we want to take it as the whole consent agenda? Do you want, yes?
All together.
I'm sorry?
All together.
Okay. And have a motion?
So moved.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor, second, accepting the consent agenda as is?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so moved. Spinelli Field update. I'm gonna turn that over to Mike. I'm not doing it now, you are.
Oh, it's like retro time here, yeah. So we had a, we had a meeting last week. The Spinelli Field Committee got together. We, we met, we discussed next steps. And we can talk about like, kind of, we've done all the research, we say, we've done, you know, you know, the, the details and what we're asking the board. And I think we're okay with the timing Renee gave and, and okay with that. Is to put on the, the march up for a boat, we marched a request for up to $3 million to fund a field, a new track, and new lights for the Spinelli complex. So just focusing on those three parts. The field, the track, the lights, up to $3 million. You know, put that out to the, to the voters. And then, like, see what happens, kind of go forward.
And the other thing that we need from this board for the Spinelli Field is we need, we had approved last year the funds for the geotechnical study, which did not get done. And we had approved it.
We do have an update on that, so the.
Last year, right?
Always sent me today that because of what happened at your meeting, the geotechnical engineer has been through it. Process for the necessary digging of test pits is underway. By the next board meeting, you should have an analysis of the soil, location, water table, clay content, and soil remediation plan with an engineer stamp for Spinelli Field.
Okay.
On your next meeting.
So.
Yeah, you already voted to.
We already voted to, we just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that we hadn't spent the money last year and we were going to move forward with it this year. So, so I guess we're looking for a motion here tonight to have Spinelli Field put on the ballot in March, so.
So moved.
Three firsts. They wanted, that's a Charlie, and Dave as a second, right?
Right.
Okay, they were first and second, sorry. Any further discussion on this?
Is this, this is on the ballot in all district towns?
Correct.
All MAU towns.
All MAU, yeah, yeah. And we did discuss the town meeting that we would just give the one. Town meetings, not try to be at every town meeting, just do one, Bennington Town Meeting. But we would also hold informative meetings prior to the vote. Multiple informative meetings for, probably in the blue seats at the high school. Just for everybody to come, anybody and everybody.
Good.
Okay. No more discussion? No questions? Great. All those in favor of putting Spinelli Field on the March ballot, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Jim?
Good evening, everyone. In the last board meeting, there was a question brought up food shortages at the high school. I did speak with Maureen O'Neill from the Abbey Group, maybe on this meeting too. That same Maureen. There was a shipping issue on that particular day. I know that she did share an email with me where she communicated with the student about it. She was also talking to the chef at the high school about it. And I'm not there, so I, you know, I can't say with a hundred percent certainty, maybe the students not in. But she said they have not run out of the main meal since that, that one incident. There is a food serve, the regular food service meeting is tomorrow afternoon at what time?
3:30 in the adjacent room, open to the public. It is warmly asked for student participation, parents, board members, administrators, teachers.
And that will, that will be part of that meeting discussion. But Maureen, is that you? Maureen O'Neill, are you at this meeting?
Yes, that's me.
Hi, Maureen.
Hi, guys.
Don't worry. So if you don't know, this is Maureen O'Neill. She is from the Abbey Group, our, our Director of Food Services. Maureen, anything that you would like to add other than from what you and I discussed?
No, no, I, I, you know, when we had the problem with the main meal running out, I mean, you know, it, I don't want to say stuff happens, but there's still always food available. Every other line has food when that happened. But it also concerns me, so I addressed it with the student and said, please let me know if it happens again. And I haven't heard back from that student or the principal about it. And I checked with Chef Marin and the main line has not gone out or run empty since then. And yeah, you know, I don't know, I love to feed kids, so I always want everybody fed. And yeah, I, I, I personally don't feel a concern about it, but I'm happy to discuss it with anyone that does. And again, the student has never reached back out to me. Jim, you have the, our emails on it, so.
Thank you for joining us, Maureen. And thank you to the Abbey Group and their dedicated work and their commitment that we don't want. We want the main meal there every day for every student that wants it.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, we all know, I mean, sometimes stuff, it happens. Like, Jim, usually, you know, the example of Taco Day, like, you plan on 500 and it's always popular and 600 took it that day. And you know, the last few may run out, but you try your best and, and that's what we do. But no sooner will ever, ever be unfed. There's always a meal for somebody, so.
Thank you, Maureen.
Any questions on this topic?
Anybody?
Eating time, you said it's a week and you went out there, but I didn't see that notice.
Yeah, it came out.
Those meetings were typically quarterly?
Yes.
When we're not in a re, a contract renewal year, they're usually quartering. And, and it's not specific because it depends on the month, so sometimes they shift a little bit. So give or take four meetings in here.
Thank you.
Okay.
So the annual snapshot came up from the AOE for schools that are identified for, that need comprehensive support and improvement. And I want to inform the board that Mount Anthony Union Middle School is eligible for support to help comprehensive improvement. Mount Anthony Middle School, not the high school, the middle school. We have been assigned from AOE an education quality coordinator. We will be attending a workshop on the 28th of this month for what all of this means. There is money attached to this. It's awarded Title I School Improvement Grant for three consecutive years to implement evidence-based strategies and to build local capacity to sustain improvement efforts. The dollar amount awarded to Mount Anthony Union Middle School is $325,556. So.
Yearly or?
I knew you were gonna ask that question, so I went back and read, I got the email of the dollar amount yesterday and I went back and read it. I think that's the total award. I don't believe it's yearly, but I, I, I don't know. So that'll be something.
Money to educate.
Right, yeah, so we also had three of our, I let the union elementary board know there were three of the elementary schools. Molly Stark Bennett Elementary and Ponnell are also eligible for those improvement grants. So I don't have a lot of information of what that's going to entail and what is eligible spending under that, yet that's all part of the workshop on the 28th. But I wanted you to know because the state, I did do a press release on it, so you may see. The original press release did not have the schools that were wanted, but it, the, it is out there on their website too. We have had three negotiating sessions. I won't go into details. I may do that to the chair. We just had one again this Monday. We will meet again next on December 4th. I'm, I'm encouraged that we will make some progress. My goal is still to have negotiations completed with teachers and support staff. And I want to remind you that we're doing it all at once. The two unions merged this summer into one union, and so it's taking place simultaneously. And a reminder that those are public meetings. And the discussion is in public with private caucuses and it's broadcast by, at TV. And even if you're not a member of the negotiation team, you're still welcome to, to sit in and listen. The other thing, the last thing that I need is to set a budget meeting date. Director Finance and I were discussing possible dates. We would like to meet with you December proposing.
Early December.
Early December, yeah. December 6th. Wednesday, December 6th, so it's the first Wednesday of the month, so there are no board meetings in our schedules. So we're, so we're gonna do the Union Elementary Budget Meeting the, the night before. So we're wondering, how early could you be present for budget? Is 5 o'clock too early for budget?
I was just gonna ask if we could do it at 5.
And we will, I'll have a Zoom mic, so.
Yeah, there will be a Zoom.
You have to be here. You can join remotely if it's.
So would 5 o'clock on December 6th work for the first MAU budget meeting? Yes. You can attend by Zoom. And that's it from the superintendent.
Thank you. Okay, on to policies. We are adopting policy number 5084, personal use of wireless communications. Any discussion on that?
I didn't get any feedback from anybody so far, and it's up for adoption, that's all. Recommend that we adopt.
Okay.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor of adopting policy 5084? Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. Okay, concussion, concussion management, 5120, we're warning that policy. Right? Right.
Right, and this is a new policy that we wanted to put in place to make sure that everybody is being treated the same whether they are an athlete or not. You can come from home and be subject to a concussion and you need to, you know, notify the school that that's occurred and your kid can get in the protocol to make sure they go through the reduced class schedule and do all these other things before they go out and participate. So this is a thing that's making every, everybody equal.
Yeah.
What's your thought?
Second.
Move for one, move for one.
Starting. Yep. Any discussion? Questions, comments? All those in favor of warning policy number 5120? Signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All in favor? Oh, I already said that. No abstentions. So moved.
So we did, we did have a policy meeting this past month. Two members there from this school. Great. Have that. And so I'll, in that, I, when Maureen was on, I should have mentioned this, that the Vermont School Board Association is reviewing the wellness policy.
Are you the what?
Wellness policy.
Okay.
And, and in 2025, it will be in, ready to go out. And so what they're doing is soliciting between now and there, they, they gave us some model information of process and we walked through how to build a policy and what was all in it and so forth at the Annual School Board Conference. And so then we're gonna be having to provide feedback and so forth before the final copy come out that we have to adopt to. So if you've got concerns about the wellness policy, then you need to get that information, feedback, so that we can get that to Vermont School Association, so the final policy come out, we won't have to be trying to change it. One of the things that really came up and I, that, that we had issues with here, that I, I brought up, and that was the fact that we had we have, we're joining school to a technical center. And it really didn't address technical center issues in terms of owning a school, owning a store, having a cooking, a culinary class, menu, selling foods, and presenting certain kind of things. And so at the meeting, they were really saying, oh, wow, we really forgot about technical schools. And so they having to go back and try to include information and so forth and into the policy concerning how technical school should operate under the wellness policy with these, with the changes that they're cutting out with. So that was it for the policy meeting. We're supposed to have another one in December.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the administrators' report. Who do you want to start with, the student reps, since they're here in the building?
You're on, girls.
All right, well, we don't have, well, I don't have a whole lot. She has more than me, but. Um. The Patriot, the MAU Drama Club Patriot players just finished their, this last weekend was the Brothers Grimm Spectacularthon performances. It went very well. They sold more tickets than they did for Clue, if anyone remembers that. That was a couple of years ago. And the next production is, that has been planned is Honk, which is gonna be happening in April, I believe. So, yeah. We are also, we were discussing this with Mr. Payne today. There have, this has been brought up a couple of times by students there. No one really knows what to do in the case of a, an emergency during lunchtime. So we were talking to Mr. Payne about a way to tell, not necessarily do a drill during lunchtime because that is potentially not possible or hazardous, but potentially like going over it during class meetings or something because no one knows what to do in the case of a lockdown drill or of a fire drill or like any of those emergency situations because they try to avoid doing them during lunch and disrupting that and that. And also the Climate Change Club is looking into composting in the cafeteria and figuring out a way to do that and a way to encourage students to compost and then potentially use the compost created on campus in the greenhouse or in the gardens by the back building. But that's still sort of a work in progress, so.
Just to follow up on the lunches that was over earlier. I have noticed that like, they are like, there's a lot more of the like main hot lunches, especially because usually when I would go up to the lunch line, I usually get to lunch a little bit late. And usually by the time I get there, they're like scraping up what last bits they have, but I'm usually around the last person to get lunch anyways. So I've been noticing that like, there's still a lot of food left, just in case people want to like go back and purchase more or if people come even later and want to get lunches, so that's, I've seen improvement. I have contacted the Interact and Student Senate Clubs. And Interact, we currently have 56 student volunteers. And in the last week, the club has raised over $120 just in donations. In November, they have volunteered for the Holiday Craft Market. That was on the 4th. And they have participated in the empty bowls on the 5th. In December, we plan on doing things like the Museum Family Day on the 2nd. I did that personally last year. I've been in the last for a little bit. Those are all the like more recent things that we've done that most people know about.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you right here because 18 Interact kids showed up at Chuck or Treat to volunteer, which was a huge help because 1500 kids showed up for candy. So it was great. Appreciate them.
And then for the Student Senate, we hosted our annual bonfire. That was a week ago. And tonight is the volleyball tournament where student and teachers participate in their own volleyball teams. I have the National Society's doing Thanksgiving dinner where they, a student will, they're going to donation for Thanksgiving dinner for.
Awesome. Yes.
Could I throw in, the marching band was in the last parade. They look good.
At the Veterans Day.
Yeah. She mentioned something about purchasing food. Is that true? Free lunches are free and breakfast? And are they food for sale as well?
If you want to have a set meal.
If you're my son, you buy two. I wanted to make sure that the public didn't get, I mean, heard it. So the thing is saying, everybody gets a free meal, but if you want another one. but if you want another one, you can purchase another.
Yes.
Okay. That makes it clear.
Teachers like the paper though.
This is student.
Thank you.
First group one. I'm gonna do my best Tim Payne impersonation. Evening, folks. Um, there are some overlap students reports, so I'll be quick on those, but he does want to thank Lynn Sweet and the entire cast for an excellent presentation of the Brothers Grimm Specula to Haplon.
Spectula.
Just passed me. Uh, he found it hilarious. Uh, thank you to all coaches and student athletes on a successful fall sports season. Soccer and volleyball, good sports in the playoffs, and cross-country running, which is having a banquet tonight. Um, did well at the state championship, football cheerleading provided great entertainment throughout the season as well. And thank you to the student council for hosting the fall bonfire. Uh, he appreciates that all students and adults who came up to enjoy, uh, school spirit and singing loudly.
You do sound like that.
Thank you to the Benning Cabana for its positive editorial on eleven fourteen twenty-three on the contribution of students to their school community through co-curricular activities, including athletics and athletics. A reminder to all students and their families that quarter one ended on October twenty-fifth, and all grades are available from the parent portal. A paper copy of student report cards was also mailed home. A reminder that winter sports season will start Monday, November twenty-seventh. Student athletes are required to have an updated physical on file. Students must also be academically eligible to participate. I'm being encouraged students to keep up on their schoolwork throughout the school year. That is Principal Payne's report for this evening.
Question? He was going to share with me the phys ed curriculum. Could you remind him that I'd like to.
This would be happy to do.
Yes. Second, uh, he said that we have a defibrillator. My next question, maybe Mike can answer, do all coaches know how to run it?
Yes. So, uh, we have a coaches' meeting on Sunday that the coaches are required to, uh, to attend. They get CPR, they get AED, they get concussion, they get training, uh, because our athletic trainer comes, um, and trains them on that day. If they can't make it to that, they need to make a time, uh, to get trained. And there is a coaches' database that the BPA collects, where we keep track of, of all that, so it is, uh, it is something that is BPA required. Um, but there are, I know we've purchased extra AEDs. Um, our trainer has one on her cart, like, out at football or in soccer, like, during the fall, or with her. Um, I think it's housed right outside of the cafeteria, that you kind of can see it, um, as you enter into the gym. And there's two more that have been purchased, one on each floor of the high school to kind of put them closer, uh, to, and they're looking to purchase maybe another one as well, so. Uh, yeah, in all the.
District-wide, we're looking at purchasing additional units, yeah. Middle school.
Middle school.
Good evening. I am sorry that I cannot be present for the board meeting tonight, but I have included a principal's report for Mr. Culkin to share. I've been meeting regularly with the eighth grade student council. They have been an energetic and active group. They have organized the following events. Spared week during the week of October thirtieth through November third. Each day was a different theme from a positive school culture and community. Many students and staff participated in spirit. A dodgeball tournament that took place on Friday, eleven seventeen, will take place. That's this Friday. Money raised from the tournament goes to student council, and they have decided to donate a portion to the Toys for Tots organization, who support children and families in need during the holidays. They're also working with Toys for Tots to organize a toy drive at the middle school during one week in December. The principal wishes to share the results of the fall measures of academic progress, known as the MAP test. This test is taken in the fall, winter, and spring, based on national normative data. The Union Middle School students met their projected growth in both the math and reading test for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. The principal is proud of students and staff for their hard work. In preparation for the winter MAP test, they are organizing a school-wide celebration if we reach our growth measure as a school. We'll show, the principal will share more details at a future meeting as we get closer to the event. The middle school continues to have students participate in a wide range of after-school clubs and activities this school year. We currently have twenty-two clubs and activities offered, with an additional three clubs, activities beginning this winter. Transportation homes provided for students at four thirty, as needed. Middle school had a successful fall sports season with students participating in cross-country flag football and soccer teams. A note for Mrs. Galley, I am proud of all the teams that showed up every day and put the work in on and off the field. None of this could have been so successful without the dedication of time that all coaches put into these teams. Thank you to all. We're gearing up for a winter sports signup in basketball, wrestling, and Nordic skiing. The principal looks forward to another successful season of athletics at Mount Anthony Union Middle School. That concludes Mr. McGuire, Principal McGuire's report.
Thank you very much. Committee reports. We have finale and we have policy. Did you want to elaborate more on policy?
I, I, well, the annual school board meeting was gonna be under that.
Okay.
I just talked about, yeah, I mentioned part of that, the wellness policy out of that, but, uh, we had the annual school board conference, and it was two members from here, and we had two members that were all packed as far, that signed up that, for some reason, they couldn't take it. So I do have their packet I picked up. The, the, the big thing, it was quite great, and I, I, if you didn't go, what they did this year, they listened to everybody. They sent a lot, they sent the same packet of information to all of the board members that covered everything that they taped about the school board conference. And so you got that from Susan, and you can go on, and you can click on it and say, I want to hear this, I want hear it in this, this particular thing and so forth along that line. So you can really get the training. They're going out of their way to try to make sure they help school board members learn what they need to do. And inside the package says, think about serving your school board. We know that there's shortages all over, and they put out packets talking about what it is that you need to be, how you need to be recruiting school board members and so forth, and what they need to know before they even run to be a school member. So that's a good thing. The school, annual school board members. My school board association is really trying to help, uh, get students, and get, get school board members. But the annual conference was just great. Uh, I, uh, attended the one on the policy, which was, I just talked about. But the other thing in here, they broke out the agenda. But one of the things that, in terms of evaluating the central works of a school board reflection to and that, I would want you to probably go out, I mean, recommend, I would recommend anybody to look at that and evaluate what it is that you think you should be doing at the school board, and they put it in here so that you can actually do the checks, yes, no, and vice versa along that line. Uh, Darryl Kemp was keynote speaker. He attended Morehouse College in Atlanta, and he, uh, can, he is working in San Francisco over there. But he talked a lot about, uh, the effective strategies for fostering strong governance teams, uh, in terms of a school board. And so the basic thing that I just wanted to get out of it, the thing he said that got to me the most, he says, well, everybody that runs for a school board really is looking at trying to do things for their kids. But what you need to understand is that if you were to get sick, it ain't your kid that's tending to you. It's somebody else's kid. It ain't your kid, it ain't, it's not you, your kid is going to school. You're not teaching them. They go to school, and some other, somebody else's kid is their teacher, or their coach, or vice versa. So you need to realize that we need to be prepared to, to, to standardize our efforts for everybody. Treat everybody like we want everybody to be treated, because it's not your kid that's getting the week of the benefit of a school board. It's all the kids, and all those kids that you train and put out there will see you someday, maybe at a nursing home, at the hospital, at the grocery store, or something along that line. And we need to be able to conduct that sales and amount like that. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Thank you for representing.
Yeah, we, um, education, athletics, and activities, maybe did not meet since the last meeting, so, um, we'll be meeting in December.
Okay. Stephanie, have anything that you want to add?
Um, no, I mean, I attended the negotiations. I don't know if that's a committee. And, uh, I'm hoping that we are, um, going to be moving in a direction that we will, uh, come to an agreement soon. Um, we're, the goal of, for, uh, us is to finish before budget season is over, so that we can properly, um, budget for it, uh, for our taxpayers. Um, but that's about, unless, Jim, unless you have something else to comment on for the negotiations.
Not this time. Thankful. Hopefully have more progress to report. In two weeks.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Stephanie, I think we're on to you, for chair's report.
Um, I currently have no report this evening. I apologize for not being there, uh, this evening. I had the last minute work thing come up, so.
Okay, we do want to mention that we do have two open board seats.
Yeah, sorry.
That's right. Two open board, um, seats now. Tori Rich has officially put in his resignation as, as Wendy Marie. So we'll be looking for some, um. Great. We haven't read, right. So at this, at this point, um, if there were anybody who would, I, I guess we really technically can't, and we would wait till the elections at this point, right, in March.
Thirty days from when
The official.
the clerk is notified, um, to appoint somebody, the board loses that authority after thirty days, and then it goes. We only appoint somebody who would serve out to.
To the end of the term.
So.
To that person, sure.
And Wendy Marie was, no, no, the next regular scheduled election.
Oh.
Oh.
Because they don't show up on the ballot as an unexpired term. They would have to be elected in March.
So, but we only have, so we could only fill North Vettington and Powell right now.
Right.
Because of thirty days.
Right.
Correct? And otherwise, we would have to wait to, until March. So, and there are other people who are, whose terms are up in March, too. Mine being one of.
Right, you, you potentially have, you'd have quite a big turnover in March.
So, um, maybe we shall read that flyer that something else suggesting and recruit some more people.
When, what was the official day? Like, when did our thirty days start?
For Tori or for?
Both.
Well, it says from when the clerk was notified.
Yeah, the clerk.
On the court.
Oh, so he's just notified.
No, the, um.
But I, I've only shared with Cassie, um, Tori's resignation, because I wasn't aware that Wendy had officially submitted.
Right. I, I didn't know if she officially resigned.
The, the text, um, said that, you know, I can read what she wrote, but, um, it, it, it was, I do not have an official resignation letter.
Tori, we do, and that was probably at least two weeks.
Two weeks ago.
Sent it to Cassie on Tuesday, October twenty-fourth.
We don't have much time.
And it's Powell and North Vettington, so?
Yes. Well, is it even, if, if they're only serving through the end of this, is it even worth the effort?
I, I would suggest maybe not.
Maybe.
Unless you have an outstanding candidate you think that wants to do it, because we're basically gonna focus on budgets from now. We typically do not meet in February once the budgets are set, but you'll have multiple budget meetings in December and January potentially, unless you get it all done in one night, which I don't think will happen.
So just to clarify.
It's such an outstanding presentation that we'll wrap it up in one night. But, I mean, it's, it's the desire of the board, but, you know, if you, if someone's listening and hears this, and they come forward to you, and you want to hold a special meeting to appoint somebody, that's what you, you would have to do.
Just a quick question. Wendy said once somebody, a suitable candidate, has been found, so that, you know, um.
So that's, I guess, technically hasn't resigned, correct?
She's also not here tonight. She normally does, but.
So in that instance, do we let her know that we're not, we?
I think we should.
We're not planning on finding a suitable candidate, so.
Until March, at least.
I can call her tomorrow.
We want to make sure that folks know so they can submit a petition, um, get that submitted to Cassie by the deadline, which I think is the fifth, Monday before.
She is the court for all of my meetings, her individual town courts.
Fifth Monday before the election. Do we know, hand who's up? Aside, I know you just said you, but who's up?
I believe I am also.
And so you may have six open seats, so that would be twenty-four. Yeah, Steph, Susan.
Three.
Eddie.
Tori.
Wendy Marie.
Tori.
And the vacant.
And the vacancy.
Yeah, those were the, the ones that I just read were the two thousand, were the twenty fours. That doesn't even take into consideration the others.
Oh. Okay. So Stephanie's gonna let Wendy Marie know tomorrow?
I'll call her tomorrow.
Okay. That's all I got. Fred.
Five questions.
Oh, my.
Yes. I, I'm looking at your coaching. Um, I heard that one of our coaches who got replaced last year is going to be an assistant in another sport this year. Is there? Is that?
Yeah, no, like, that is as up to date as I have right now. Um, I do know I have to find a JV girls' basketball coach that has been posted. Um, I do have some candidates for that. Um, and then I'm looking for a varsity cheerleading, and a middle school cheerleading. Um, that has been posted as well. Um, so though, that's where I'm at. I did email Nick today about a assistant swimming coach who has, who has come forward. We, I didn't put that down um, because there wasn't one, but it is in the it is on file, uh, or, uh, in the appendix to have an assistant swimming coach. Swimming may have twenty-five, like, it's coed, and, uh, so having a second adult, uh, there is, there are lifeguards on duties, but but that is as up to date as I have, so you may know something I don't know, so.
Years to the ground, though.
So volunteers would have to be approved to.
Yeah, volunteers, well, the list of volunteers that I will get, I'll get those from them on Sunday at my coaches' meeting, so they don't have, they haven't submitted those names, but they do have to go through, uh, background checks. They do have to go through that, so. But volunteers, like, when I coached soccer all those years, I would just write, you know, they would get a, a, a white people pad, and we'd write down your volunteers, and they'd have to go through the background. Uh, yeah, those, on those lists are just the paid coaches. I wouldn't submit the list of volunteers. They just go through that.
Well, yeah, they were sending the papers weak.
We did?
Yeah.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you. Leon brought my cliff mic.
No. Speaking of paper, back to the board openings, would it be advantageous to, as a, as a, I don't know if you can even do that.
Speaking of paper, back to the board openings, would it be advantageous to as a as a, I don't know if you can even do this. As a um. District to have, see if the banner would. You know, publish something that lists the openings that we're gonna have, like to get that out there and get people thinking about it, because I think a lot of people oftentimes don't even know. What seats are up. And without going and asking Cassie, they're not gonna know that, so I think it would be.
I can talk to the editor, Tori Rich.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
That's a couple of questions.
That he put us into, he put us in his.
But the other thing that would be a really great thing because um one of the most. Red pages besides obituaries and boards and the front page is letters to the editor, so it would. It would be a great idea if some of the board members wanted to submit a letter to the editor. Saying join us. So. But I will talk to Tori.
We can also run an ad, you know, if we if we need to. Similar to like with.
Hey, I can help you with that too.
Yeah.
All right. I'd entertain a minute, motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?